All right, it is seven o'clock, Mr. McKnight, will you lead us in the application, please?
Well, let's, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening and for the rain that benefits us all. We pray that you would continue to bless the borough as we, as a council are and as our employees, as Fred and all the staff are working hard in these difficult times to provide for the needs of our community. And we thank you, Lord, for all the opportunities that you've given us. We thank you for those that are being generous with their time and with their, with their funds to, to, to meet those needs for those that are hard pressed in our community. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that you bless the business tonight as we discuss it, as we vote upon it, and help us, Heavenly Father, to realize that our hope is in you. And we thank you, Lord, for all your blessings. Now, we ask again that you be with us, be with our first responders, be with our staff, be with our police force. And we know, Heavenly Father, that they do a super job for us. And we thank you for each of them and pray for your protection. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Want to rise for pledge?
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
I pledge.
Those allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
The United States of America.
America. And to the republic which it stands.
One nation for God.
Under God. Liberty and justice for all.
Oh, boy. All right, roll call, Mr. Potzer?
He has to unmute first.
You're on mute, you're on mute, Fred.
Sorry. No one, one. Mr. Crouch?
Present.
Mr. Deal? Mr. Erickson? Mr. Darius? Mr. Sinkovitz? Mr. Penner?
Here. All right, let's get into the consent agenda. You have meeting minutes from August 25th, 2020, the regular meeting, and the September 1st, 2020 Public Works Session. Any, any changes in those minutes that you see need to be made? Okay, hearing none, let's go on to the approval of bills. So for the approval of bills, we have the funding for copy releases, two sixty nine, $269. Higher Information Group, $145.50. B. Morier Communication, $478. Raybold Services, $48. Irwin and McKnight PC, $187.50. Irwin and McKnight PC, $1,320. Edmond Fuels, $151.99. Tri-Borough Construction, $31.43. Pepsi Beverage, $386.94. Cedar Grove Farm Store, $169.86. Sailors Market, $48.43. Hip and Steel Auto Reconditioning, $72.36. Sailors Market, $40.21. Chamberlain Winger Sanitation, $295. The Glade Group, $2,255. PA Code Alliance, $1,867. Yeah, $1,867.50. Martin and Martin Incorporated, $498. Total General Fund Bills, $8,264.72. Under Highway Aid Bill, CNH Industrial Capital, $922.83. And Timothy Barrick Incorporated, $98.48. Total Highway Aid, Highway Aid Bills, $1,021.31. Any questions about the bills? All right, moving on to treasures report, under the general fund check, and all of these are as of August 31st, 2020. Under general fund checking, $6,097.11. Rental Fund, $1,411.28. Street Lighting Account, $444.67. Fire Tax Account, $55,034.81. Expense Account, under the expense accounts, the general expense account, $2,063.29. Newville Area Account, Newville Area Events, $5,131.40. Highway Aid Liquid Fuels Checking, $21,0936.11. Payroll Checking, $17,651.25. Pension Fund Statements, Police Pension Plan, $359,971.14. Non-Uniform Pension, $468,185.81. Other Accounts, Borough, the Borough Joint Veteran Council Account, $946.63. Capital Improvement Fund, $1,467.67. And the Tax Anticipation Loan Fund, $2,976.67. Any questions about all those numbers? Okay, you have written reports from the police chiefs, the mayor, the Zenny and code enforcement officer, street superintendent, chief plants operator, and field operations in your packets. Any questions about those? Hearing none, then we're looking for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, police chief? Report.
Okay, police report for the month of August 2020. Calls for service for the month was 241. Traffic enforcement for the month citations issued was 68. Parking violations, one. Traffic warnings issued for the month was 21. Patrol vehicle mileage, 1,785 miles. Current warrants outstanding was 38. Time of this report. Any questions on that portion? We have picked up a little bit in calls for service for this coming month. We were able to go out and serve some warrants the other day also, which is first, we've had enough staff to do that in quite some time. So that warrants outstanding number should drop some for next month. Officer Brady is currently started on his own this week. So that will help out with coverage. Officer Gutshaw is currently in a two-day training class for advanced detection of driving under the influence. That's today and tomorrow, he'll be back Thursday. The only other thing that I have, I had approval last month to start marketing some of the firearms that we were going to get rid of. And I was able to sell the three pistols that we weren't using for $500 apiece. So there's $1,500 in the Police Department Calendar Fund. I believe we put that in setting for the new purchase of firearms.
Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome. Any questions from anybody?
You're muted, Ed.
The people that you're trying to serve warrants to, are they aware of them? You've gotten them off guard.
They don't know we're coming that day, but I mean, they get all kinds of notifications from court that they're, they have fines and costs due or never pled on a ticket or could be anything.
Some of those are pretty old, aren't they?
Quite old, because we didn't have the time to really go out and do it, but yeah.
Okay, I just wondered if they were aware of this, that you were coming. That's all I have, Todd, thanks.
Anything else for the chief? All right, thank you, chief. Next up, fire, fire chief report. I don't, I don't think we got a written report, did we, Fred?
Oh, no report.
Mr. Mayor, your report.
Great, this is the, the revenue report for the month of August. Traffic fines, $1,098.79. Non-traffic fines, $381.50. Parking fines, $15. Clerk of Court fines, $276.74. For a total of $1,772.3. Obviously, these numbers are starting to trend upward in conjunction with the increased traffic enforcement. Police Department Checking Account, $5,844.11. K-9 Checking, $1,118.35. Useful balance on the department's debit card, $786.79. And $251 is the balance in the auxiliary police.
Any questions for the mayor?
Sure.
All right, thank you. We don't have an emergency management report either. So, borough solicitor, Mr. McKnight?
There is the amendment to the traffic ordinance. Fred, do we have everything that we need to, to do the amendment? That is all the changes that need to be made?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so then I need an authorization to advertise it.
Do we, did we include? I haven't seen it since, did we include the opposite sides of the street? Once a month?
The, the maintenance, yes.
Okay, so we're good on that?
All right. Yes.
Super. Any questions on that?
When, when we get that back, how soon you anticipate that going into effect? Good awareness.
Well, if we advertise it this month, we could adopt it at our next meeting in October, in, in November.
Good, okay, thanks, Marcus.
All right, do we need a motion to advertise?
I make a motion.
Go ahead, Judy.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, so we'll advertise that for, for the end of the month, end of October, correct?
Yes.
Very well. Number two.
The, we have a commu, agreement for the block grant. Fred, that is, I've looked over it, there's nothing that strikes me as, is anything out of the usual. Where does? So tell us about the grant itself. How does it work?
So the grant was originally awarded, the notification came through at 93,000 when we received the contract. The county awarded us an additional 7,000. So we have an even $100,000 to work with. And engineering is underway for this. I don't think we will be able to bid it this year. But we will have it ready to be advertised in January. We will open bids in February and then start the project in April.
So that's pretty neat that they gave us extra money.
There are some times that projects in other areas of the county end up with leftover funds and the county has to program this money and get it off its books. So we thank Chris Rafferty and the county commissioners for helping us with the additional funds.
It's a use it or lose it.
Yes.
All right, well, that's kind of neat. Well, then it's appropriate for a motion to authorize the borough to and sign the agreement.
I'm moved.
Second. And it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. McKnight?
No, the other issue we had is going to be on the agenda later.
Okay, very good. Mr. Potzer?
Okay, the manager's report for September, the 2021 budget is complete and it will be going out to you next week. Projected revenues, $862,950. $862,950. Projected expenses, $856,250. It includes many of the capital improvements that Mr. Crouch is going to talk about later on. It also includes funding requests from the department heads. We received one funding request from the police department. And all of the requests there have been met. The budget will be going out next week. We have a special meeting for October 13th at 7:00 PM to review and discuss the budget. We hope to have tentative adoption at October to 27th meeting. At that time, it'll go on public display for 10 days. And then final adoption, November 24th. The Harrisburg Transportation Study Commission, Lauren Weaver, sent me an email. And it informs us that we have an opportunity to submit projects for the capital plan through 2020, 2045. Some potential projects that we would like to submit, we have good cost estimates for, include the South High Street, Streetscape Project, $600,000 in the replacement and upgrade of the traffic signal, $275,000. Hatz also advised us that beginning next year, Pendott will be paving Main Street, High Street, Vine Street, and Fairfield Street. And this will include not only the resurfacing of these roads, but drainage improvements and new ADA ramps at all the intersections. So that's a major amount of ADA ramps that will be removed from our plan here in the borough that we will not have to fund.
What street did you say they were?
Main Street, which will include all the ramps at every intersection on Main, East and West, North and South High Street, Vine Street, and Fairfield Street.
Thanks, Brad.
The 2013 Chevrolet Silverado had the bodywork done and repainting and came back to us today. It's going out to be lettered tomorrow. And the only other long-term improvement we have for that truck is it will go back out to barracks for transmission flushing and some transmission work before winter. That will put the vehicle in good shape to keep it for at least five more years. The Newville Public Works Department has already posted no parking signs on West Street and the do not enter sign on North Corporation Street. That's all I think.
Any questions for Fred? Okay, Western Cog, Mr. Crouch?
Nothing major there. The lot, lots of line painting going on around the area lately. That was, I think, the, the most, the thing we heard the, from almost all the, the municipalities represented there. They'd all had line painting done within the last month or two. Cook Township had a mention, they have a 2006 GMC dump truck for sale. And I asked a little bit about that, looked like it'd be something that would fit our needs for what, what we would like to do with the leaf vacuum. But under the, with the way they were selling it and marketing it, it really didn't work for us this time. But it did, they were marketing it through Facebook Marketplace, which was not a place I would have thought to go looking for dump trucks. But while I was there, I looked around some more and there are, that, that is someplace I am going to be looking because it, I saw a number of other ones there that may, may meet our needs just as well at perhaps a little lower price than what Cook Township was asking for theirs anyway. So that going to keep, keep working to try to find a truck to, for that purpose. New, Shippensburg said they, their water line, water main replacement project is about three weeks from being complete and everybody cheered. We're all right, everybody that drives through Shippensburg is ready for smooth streets again. And then they're, they're also doing a sewer plant upgrade that's almost finished as well. Mount Holly Borough is mentioned that they are working on a fireworks ordinance and they actually presented a, some sample letters asking for other municipalities to support lobbying our state representatives to change the current code to allow municipalities a little more control. The general consensus there at the Western Cog meeting was that, that most of us aren't having issues that we aren't, we can't handle at this point. And the representatives, staff members who were there said that is something that actually is being worked on now though, to, to amend the code to allow municipalities to have more control over what can be, fireworks can be used within the borough, borough limits or the township limits. The secretary asked if, for us to consider a raise for her, she, that there has not been a raise for that position for quite a few years. And so we did approve a raise for there, that there has not been even cost of living adjustments for not quite a number of years. So that was approved as well as part of that meeting. I think that was the last piece of business we actually conducted.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Crouch? Very good. Mr. Darius, Public Safety Committee?
There are no current issues other than what we have discussed before. I have witnessed people driving more than 35 miles an hour, usually automobiles on Main Street. And I think that's, that's a public safety issue. But I don't know how that could be addressed or who would be the best to address it.
Mr. Kozier, when was the last time we put our system out there?
Just last week. Okay. We did a three-person detail the other week, just last week. I don't recall how many tickets we, we got to write. It wasn't a, a great amount because we got about a half hour into it and got a DUI in the middle of the afternoon and that kind of took care of our speed enforcement for that day. But that's something you're going to start to see quite frequently with the extra manpower. We also have just a little bit more on that. The intern that we currently have at the police department, one of her projects for the semester, she has the radar timing box that we have out. She's deploying that on every street in the borough and is going to compile a report here by the end of her semester. So we have some good stats towards the end of the year on every street in the borough.
That's, that's a wonderful thing. That's welcome. On, on the sideline, not related directive safety, but I think we could use better use of interns. When I worked for the federal government, I always utilized college students, interns, and some of them became full-time civil servants afterwards. I think we could, we could get a good bit of help from Shippensburg and other local colleges here when internship is a requirement for graduation. And we could utilize them for different committees as well as, you know, for various organizations within the borough. I'm just suggesting that it's, it's, it's another thing we could tap into the resource. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Darius? Okay, Economic Development Authority, Mr. Erickson?
Thanks, Scott. You have the minutes, I think, in your package of the August EDA meeting. And Lindsay, I believe, passed around or sent out the September minutes. So I hope that people have had a chance to look at those. Just some highlights from that. Was about the advisory committee. The board approved the list of potential candidates that we developed and authorized to move forward. We're in the process of doing that now. I've talked to Andrea Green, is the chair of the of the EDA. And she has, we decided that a good way to approach this would be to try to get the EDA members to reach out to some of these folks. And that would indicate how serious and important this, if we take this advisory committee to be. So I'm in the process now drafting an email for her to send to the board members with the list of names and asking them to sign up to do some recruiting. Whatever they do, I'll follow up on, you know, to, with the, with the details of that. But we're hopeful we can get the advisory committee on the ground in the next couple of months. On the Prospect Hosting Committee, I think we reported the last time the Business Recruitment Guide was finalized. We were working on the trifold. It's like a three, three-page promotional document to be used by the PHC. It's about in its final version now. And with that, we, we have the documents that we need to be able to go out there and start doing some things. We had our first outreach meeting on the 22nd, Chris and myself, on Andrea and Jason Malat, who are on the, on the PHC with Val Copenhagen, who's the Director of Community Development, and Jamie Keener, who's the President of Katic. And the purpose was to start engage them and develop a working relationship. We talked about ways in which they could help us with our outreach to small businesses, both in terms of providing information, providing leads, giving us financial support. So then we came up with a list of steps to take to sort of operationalize this. We, I've scheduled a meeting on October 8th for the Prospect Hosting Committee to develop more on those steps to put a strategy together. But the idea here is we should soon be able to start doing some outreach to Katic's help to attract some small businesses and also to maintain a focus on retaining the businesses that we have. We're going ahead to try to set up a meeting with Wayne's Borough Economic Development Organization, which has repeated to have done a very good job on that, on economic development. We're looking for something in the week of October 19th. Working on that now. And then on terms of the website, we are trying to get together a website for the EDA, which will be used by the Prospect Hosting Committee and will be, you know, it's the source of information for what the EDA is doing. So we'll have marketing value as, as well as informational value. Chris Blata, who's the project chair, and I met with Tessa Bloser on last week, 21st, I think. And presented us with an excellent plan for moving forward, one that's extremely reasonably priced. I think the next steps for that are we to meet with the with the EDA at their next meeting and get their authorization to move forward with that. So we're hoping that that, you know, we can sort of get that website off the ground soon. Chris made his staff reports. He talked about, his staff report, he talked about a few things that the possible acquisition of one and three East Main Street for the purposes of developing a veterans park there. There was discussion about a grant, a CDG grant of about 100,000 or 113,000, I think. Part of that. And there's also discussion about our Cumberland Valley Rail Trail. We had the, our last meeting, I guess we had a discussion with them. We were moving forward with trying to put together a panel of folks that can work on no matter what they have in Shippensburg. And we've been working with And we've been working with them to sort of develop ideas in that regard. Fred's already talked about the North Corporate. That we've gotten. And and also the paving. We did not receive, as Fred said, the ten thousand dollar COVID grant to help. Costs of the EDA, so we are going to have a discussion tonight. A supplemental funding to get us through the end of twenty twenty. And some ideas about, you know, how we can come up with funding going forward. And that will be a discussion item for the twenty twenty one budget as well. EDA Board. Mike Liedler, who was a member of the original board was unable to attend any of the meetings because of the press of business. Since he has left the board, the EDA discussed this. And. Letter to us, which is in the packet. Informing and since we retain authority to the point requesting the commitment of Vince Malat, who is a real estate agent here. Very important. In the work that we're going to be carrying out. So I think we're going to have a discussion about that a little later. Is pretty much my report unless there are any other questions or comments.
Any questions for Jack?
Add anything that you wanted to add.
Oh, I have nothing else yet.
All right, very good. Next up Recreation, Mr. Sickovich.
I really don't have anything, but from our meeting we had last month, you talked about a. A list of available funding sources for the project for the park and recreation. If you remember that for the splash splash fund. Was on page three of our last report. Was under Parks and Recreation Committee. We talked about a list of available funding sources for the project. We're going to be reviewed the twenty ninth.
Trying to look here, yeah.
The the only probably the best source of funding Ed right now is DC and our funds. They have a component for small communities, small projects. They'll fund anything up to fifty thousand dollars. It's much more streamlined than there are other applications. It would be the way to go for this application. Either that or block grant monies through the county would be the two best option.
So you've mentioned the last meeting, the approximate cost for that. Would you say it was you have you remember that with that?
I think it was around thirty around thirty five thousand total.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Could we apply to both of those or just one?
Right now, we we pretty much saturated our applications at the county. And the funding is closed, the the window for funding applications is closed. I would, my focus is going to be on DC and R for right now. We can't get anything from DC and R. Why? We'll start to look at other alternatives, but. DC and R, I think, would be the best option.
Is the hope that we can do this next spring?
The goal would be to do it next summer. Have the funding and everything in place so that we could work on it over the summer month.
God, that's really all I have. Just a question.
All right, any other questions, Fred?
We've had a successful ball season down here. I can tell you that. Very successful.
Seems busy.
It is busy.
Very good. Quality Life, Mrs. Deal.
Okay, we did have a person inquire at least on Parsley Street about removing a tree. We've sent him an application twice now and I've not heard anything back from him. I did send him a message on email today, but didn't hear from him, so. I told him that it would have to be tabled until our next month if he's still interested and I did buy there. It's at ninety. Oh, I'm not partially street Broad Street on ninety three Broad Street and. The sidewalk is pretty humped up there, so that tree does need to be removed. The other thing is trick or treat. I know we talked about that at our last work session. And, you know, I really wanted to do trick or treat, but from what I understanding. CDC is not recommending. Trick or treat be done. I guess basically due to the safety of how people are handling, you know, candies and things like that, so. You know, I recommend that we pick a night and say if people want to trick or treat, this is the night that we do it. But you're on your own as far as any kind of liability goes. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but that's my opinion.
Would we still provide? Would we still provide traffic? Folks at those intersections?
I think it would be wise to do that. If you're if you're. I'm not sure if a child or a family's run down. In a crosswalk that having no one there to. From the borough would look good.
Imply some. I'm not sure on being saying you're on your own goes should go quite that far.
You know.
I agree with Marcus. If if the council, the group is going to say. We will have a trick or treat night. If you choose to participate, fine, but once we say that we're going to do that. Then we we're obligated to have some sort of traffic control.
Okay.
Can we limit the route? Can we limit the route to certain streets? Or what? What is? I mean, we should. I don't think we should open up the whole borough. There's no way we could ensure safety and.
Well, whatever we usually do, we could do.
Well, usually the whole borough is open because you have people that live. Out, you know, Broad Street way, and then you have people that live in town here. I know that. Just from seeing things on social media, there are there is a group that is organizing. Trick or treat like on Corporation Street and that for October thirty first.
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
I will say I'm not a fan of it happening on October thirty first. For a number of reasons. I would I would sooner stick to our Thursday night. Six to eight kind of thing and. But you know, that's my opinion.
Yeah, but I thought that last year. If I'm I might be mistaken, but I thought Fred said that it was agreed upon to do trick or treat on Halloween.
I don't know.
But I don't, yeah.
I think in our last meeting, we were inquiring on when other municipalities were doing around us, which. Shippensburg is on Thursday night. Fred, did you just say West Pensboro decided they're doing Thursday night?
Oh, well, then if we're gonna do it, it should be that Thursday night. Yeah, I think, but. It's up to you guys what you want to do.
Do we have an obligation to ensure safety of the kids as they cross the?
Yes.
All right. But we have to be prepared for that.
Okay.
So we are gonna we are gonna sponsor it and then we will have the liability for it, I guess.
Right, just it just. If you're gonna have children in mass in groups out after dark, you have to provide for that for safety.
Right, yeah, I'm not arguing with that. I'm just saying that that inherently comes with the liability for the event, right? If you if you provide security. And you're taking responsibility for it.
Well, but but the alternative of not providing. Now I get it. Fire police or police at intersections is is.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I thought the idea was we didn't want to take liability for it, and so that's why we were going to do the scale down thing. But if you do what you're talking about. It's on us, which is fine. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I just want to make sure we.
I'm not. I'm I'm not sure how you can scale it down.
I I don't think there's anything. We wouldn't be doing anything different than what we would do any other year. We we provide direction at the intersections. And really, that's that's all we're responsible for. Is that correct, Fred?
That's right.
Then this won't be this won't be any different than any other year then.
I I I mean, beyond, I mean, if if somebody chooses to hand out candy, that's an individual choice and, you know, if somebody chooses to come in, that's their individual choice. They're going to come into town whether we whether we approve it or not is 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 what I believe. I I mean, I just.
If you don't have a particular night, you're gonna open it up to every night.
Right.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand why this was different. Because it sounds like sponsoring the night, we're going to provide security for it. I didn't. I'm not getting how it's different than previous years then.
Well, the number of families who may participate may be down. The number of people opening up their homes. For trick or treaters may be down depending on their their view of the pandemic.
What about keeping distance and things like that according to COVID nineteen?
Well, of course. The little goblin should wear masks.
Yeah.
I would hope they had a mask on. I think distance would be hard to enforce, especially at night.
I don't expect the police to enforce distance. Todd, what are your thoughts?
Truthfully, my my biggest concern would be for to get enough manpower to cover the streets. I know most of our auxiliary police are senior citizens. I don't know what all their views are because I haven't talked to them for quite some time with no events going on this year. What their views are as far as the pandemic and whether they want to be out amongst. A crowd like that. So it it might be a challenge to to get enough. People that are qualified to do. Working on the road, Ray.
We're living in the new normal. We got to be careful.
Brad, what's your opinion?
Might.
What's my opinion?
Well, to not set a date. And give the chief until the workshop meeting to see. What what kind of a response he could get from the auxiliary police.
Yeah, I could get a head count easily in a in a couple of days.
Okay.
And and, you know, maybe even the possibility of fire police from other municipalities if they're willing.
Yeah, I would not be surprised if Penn would be willing to do it.
Okay, so we're going to table it to the work session, but.
That's just a suggestion that I made. I mean, that's your decision.
Right.
We get a tentative date tonight, though.
Well, that. What I'm hearing is that other municipalities are doing it on October twenty ninth, so. I would say that that would be the night we should do it also to keep everything in line.
Keep the crowd smaller.
Right.
That's a good. What is your opinion?
Who did you ask, Michael?
Fred.
What some of the other municipalities are doing to get around the COVID situation. Is merely to set a date and time. There was an extensive article in the Patriot News and that ends it. That's all they're doing, setting a date and time. It's up to the parents, safety. Masks distancing, it's all up to the parents and guardians of the children. All the municipalities are doing is setting a date and time.
I still think for our town, I still think for our town, at least having the major intersections. Supervised would be.
Fred, you know what? I think the more you the more you get into things like as Jack pointed out. You start providing fire police. You start designating streets and routes. Then this takes on a sponsorship. When you take on the sponsorship, then you take on the liability and this year. It's a different year in terms of liability. We know this with our events at the community park. That's why we're asking people at the community park. To post a bond, post insurance to come in for events and so forth. How do you do that with this and that? So it's. That's why many municipalities are just picking a date and time.
And I I agree with that point that we, as far as setting routes, doing much beyond that. Is incurring more liability, but because we have two state highways that are fairly well traveled, I think we would be foolish if we didn't. Provide for some public safety at those crossings at least.
Do we have insurance so that if some really untoward event, let's assume we do it the way we're talking about doing it. Where we are taking some implied liability. Do we have insurance that would cover an event of some sort that might occur?
Well, what we do is we ensure the auxiliary police are covered. And they might come out and work any event. They could come out tonight and work a water leak. So they're covered for that type of event when they're working, when they're activated by the mayor. And activated by the chief, they have coverage.
Okay.
Your question was about what if there's a claim made by someone who's injured? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, injured wasn't. And we've set, you know, we have created that we. Set the night, we've made fire police available, set a route. You know, you're the lawyer, I'm not, but I would think you're assuming implied liability there and. In that case. We're gonna get sued and and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I just think we should, you know, walk into it with our eyes open here. Are we going to be covered with the liability if such if such a thing happens? And that's, you know, then we just have to make a decision as to whether we're okay with that.
Well, every night. That you pick usually for trick or treat. I have a meeting in Lower Missland Township, so I drive through the borough. And. The thought of having all the having groups of children milling about downtown. Without any supervision. Except parents. Is is a concern. Because there's a lot of traffic that goes through town.
Yeah, if if we don't have traffic control. And something happens, guaranteed, we're going to be accepting the liability for that anyhow.
Why? Why?
Was it Jack? Did was that your question, Jack?
Yeah, why? I mean, if we have we have no role in this, what's our liability?
Liability is it happened in Newville Borough and we're the governing body and and. You can rest assured it will become an issue.
I would tend to agree if it's if what if. Whether even if we don't set routes, we do just what Fred said, if we advertise a date. And say this is when when Newville Borough is open to trick or treaters. We have large groups of people and children coming in and and crossing the street. Somebody gets hit. There that is almost an automatic lawsuit that we weren't providing for their safety.
Great, and 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 everything we're talking about right now is being recorded. And easy enough to research about whether or not we had a discussion about providing traffic control and then chose not to.
Okay, so I mean, Marcus, you're the lawyer here. Pretty much whatever we do, if we have any role in this at all, it's on us, right?
Well, we've had we've had trick or treat since I was born. And Halloween parades and fountain festivals and and there's a certain amount of risk. In every one of those events, but we've always done as much as we could to ensure public safety. We have that same responsibility here.
I'm not arguing against it. I'm just trying to understand what our liability is.
Well, our liability is that if we're gonna say that there's a particular night. That you can trick or treat, but you do it at your own risk. That's fine until someone's injured or hurt. And then. And then not only do we have, um, a potential claim against us that we did nothing to mitigate. But it's just going to seem irresponsible on our part. So I, you know, the, the point is, and if you'd say that we're not going to do trick or treat this year, you're not permitted to go out any night, then they're going to go out every night.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we have to, and one of the reasons for picking Thursday night, of course, is that there is usually some sort of school the next day. So that, so that, uh, parents usually are pretty good about getting their kids in. You know, before, a- after the eight o'clock ending hour. So we're talking about two hours. I, I think that for the public good, um, it, it's wise to at least have our police at those major intersections. And if we can get some additional auxiliary people or even bringing some folks from outside. There have been few enough events, so many of the events have been canceled, that I don't think it'll be a burden to find enough people to do the traffic control.
Yeah. So what you're saying, I think, is that Fred's proposal won't make any difference in terms of our liability.
No, no.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get.
Well, let me, let me explain, let me explain this when, and it's, you know, what I'm talking about here, the article pertaining to East Pensboro and New Cumberland and the West Shore communities. When they said they would set the dates and times, they weren't going to get into social distancing or masks or any of those CDC guidelines. So they weren't going to get into that type of enforcement. What they're doing in terms of police and crossing guards, I don't know. That wasn't explained in the article. It was basically they're setting a date and time you can come in and trick or treat during those hours. It's up to the parents to determine if the kids are going to wear masks, if they're going to social distance. That obligation is on the parents. Let's talk about who can activate the auxiliary police department of Newville Borough, not the Borough Council. The mayor is in charge and the chief of police. So if you set the date and time and if the mayor and the chief deem it is in the public safety of Newville Borough to activate their auxiliary police, they can activate the auxiliary police and bring them out. We could have a fire tonight downtown, God forbid. The mayor and the chief can get together on the phone and they'll bring fire policemen in. We're not going to call a council meeting for that. Mayor, am I wrong or right?
You're correct.
All right. Well, I mean, for my two cents is I, I feel like we just might as well set Thursday night uh, from six to eight and, uh, you know, let the mayor and the chief um, work on, uh, figuring out the safety part of it. Uh, and that we just, we just go from there. Um, it like, like we said earlier, if we don't set a date, other people are going to set a date. And, you know, a Saturday evening is far more dangerous than a Thursday evening. So I, that, that's my two cents.
I have a question. Why six to eight? Why not five to seven? It's daytime.
Um, I would say because most people are working until they get home and.
It's less dangerous. It's not nighttime.
Well, I would have never been able to get my kids in a, in a Halloween costume and, and to Newville, uh, by five o'clock and.
There'd be less kids out there. It's not, it's not, it's not exactly. No, but tell me more traffic.
Right.
That's going home from work.
That's true. Yeah.
Right.
That's true. Yeah. I didn't think about that. Yeah. Right. I will draw.
All right. So do we have a motion? So, Michael?
I would move that we, uh, set Thursday night as the trick or treat night. Advertise that that is when trick or treaters are welcome in Newville from between six and eight. And, uh, that it is up to the parents and guardians to, uh, regarding the safety of their children as far as social distancing, that sort of thing. We don't have, that's not in the advertisement, but I would say that the borough stays out of that sort of thing.
All right. So your motion is to have October 29th, Thursday, October 29th as a trick or treat night from six to eight.
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion?
I do agree, I do agree that we should not get involved in enforcing the guidelines. That's not what our fire police are there to do.
Right.
Would there be present though, some, some?
I, I think what, what we should do is have our fire police and police officers wearing masks, doing the right thing. But they're not, they're not there to enforce the guidelines. They're there to provide for public safety and, uh, make sure no one's injured by, uh, a car or, um, something else.
Good.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. All right. Anything else, Joey?
Um, yes, I had, um, an email from the Pulse Pack and they just wanted to make sure that everybody in the community knows how much they appreciated all the different donations and things that they've received since COVID began. And they also put in here, if you know any of the folks who work in the community garden, please thank them for their work. They have truly blessed us with their weekly deliveries of fresh vegetables. I also want to acknowledge that up from Kurt Saylor. He's graciously ordered milk and other items for us each week as we need them. So the, the work that the people in our community have done for Pulse Pack has, you know, been greatly appreciated by them. And with that being said, I would like to do a fundraiser for Christmas to benefit the food bank and neighbors in Christ. And I would like to sell Christmas wreaths to, you know, divide the monies that we make between them. Ponder for Farms or Confrey Farms used to be is willing to make our wreaths for us. And we could, um, set up online ordering so that we have pre-orders. So we know an approximate amount of wreaths that we would have to sell. And then also have some extra ones to, um, sell the day that we distribute them. I don't know what anybody else's thought is on that, but it's a way for us to help those two organizations out.
It's like a nice idea.
Like it.
Okay. So can I have a motion that, or don't, don't I need a motion?
Well, could you just explain how it would work? So they'll make the wreaths for.
They'll make the wreaths for like $10 a piece. And then, you know, to add a ribbon or bow is a little bit extra. And we could probably sell them for, you know, 20, $22, something like that to make, you know, some.
I see. We pay them from the proceeds and the, and the remainder would go to.
Yes, yes, yes.
But Joey, would we run this through, uh, Newville, Newville Events?
Yes.
Okay.
About Valley Times, anything in Valley Times?
Well, we will once we get, you know, um, get it up and, but I just need approval that we could go ahead and do that.
I make a motion.
They moved and seconded.
All right. Thank you.
Any other, hold on, we got a vote yet.
Oh.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any extensions and the motion carries. Very good. Now you can go and, and go.
Thank you. Thank you. And.
Where do I sign up?
Thank you for thinking of this.
As soon as, well, actually Fred and, and I've talked about it before, but so it's a collaboration there. Um, we're going to put something out on our website and that, and we just need to decide if we're going to have them delivered, uh, Saturday after Thanksgiving, or if it's going to be the first Saturday in December, but, um.
Can you send out an email, can you send out an email to people and?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, that'd be great.
Yes.
So we, uh, drive through, drive through at the maintenance building.
Yeah, that would be good.
Drive through it, drive through at the maintenance building.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Thanks, Fred.
Anything else, Joey?
Um, I don't think so at this time.
All right. Anything for Joey? Very good. Administration, Mr. Crouch. You're muted, buddy.
Sorry about that. Uh, we had the five-year capital improvement plan, uh, at our work session in the beginning of the month. And you've had a chance to review it. If, uh, have any, do any of you see anything you think we need to adjust with that?
No.
The only thing, uh, that I was, I was reviewing it again, uh, discussed with Fred. Uh, I think that we should keep in mind, uh, uh, perhaps moving the purchase of a backup generator forward. It's currently scheduled for 2023. I know we've got a lot of, uh, things, you know, still uncertainty with, with funding and so forth right now. So it's, it's not a decision to make right, that, right now. But I think we're, we're due for a, a, a tough winter. If not this year, very soon. Uh, we, we haven't had, and the weather's pattern seemed to be changing. If we, if we lose power within the borough, um, we currently don't have any, any source for backup power for our operations. So I think that's something that we probably should prioritize a little higher if, if, uh, we have the funding and so forth to do it. Uh, and we can, there's, you know, this is a, this is a plan. It's not a, uh, anything that's set in concrete. So it's something we can change. But that's the only suggestion that I, I made to Fred and we discussed that a little bit. Um, that that is probably something that could be prioritized as we make adjustments going forward.
We don't have a backup.
No, we don't.
And what is it backing up?
We rely on portable generators.
And this is, what with the generator, um, power?
Well, it would power our radio console and would, uh, power the emergency operations room up on the second floor here at the Borough Office.
Oh, yeah. Just bang backup for that.
Seems like that should have a higher priority.
Is, uh.
The reason that.
Go ahead, Fred.
The reason that it wasn't moved up and it can be moved up. Um, because you're about to possibly enter into a discussion to lease facility. And we're going to talk about that later in the meeting. So we'll save the discussion for that time. But, uh, you may have to fund this generator as part of that project. So it may end up moving up sooner than we expect. It might, may end up moving till next year, depending on our discussions later tonight.
But that isn't something that can be funded by Highway 8?
No, no.
Okay.
Uh, the, the best source of, best source of funding would be USDA. Um, they're, they're, they're great for funding projects like this. The other option would be, uh, to enter into a lease agreement with, uh, Scott Webb over at Keystone Pump and Power. And just simply put in a cutover switch, have an electrician put in a cutover switch here at the Borough Office. And then if you need a generator, just call Scott and he would send one over for the duration of the emergency. And you could have it on standby, sitting out behind the building until you would make a decision on, you know, where you're going to be going long-term with a police station and municipal building.
Yeah, I guess that's where kind, I kind of tied in with it was, is first of all, is it something that's, can be easily moved? If we make that decision, uh, to a new facility and, but it almost sounds like that may be a good, a good patch until, until, um, you know, that decision, if that's the decision, until that building's built and we go that direction.
Yeah, Scott has a, a new facility over in, uh, Dillsburg. And, uh, he's super to work with. We've used him in the past for that large pump that we had during one of the hurricanes about two years ago down the maintenance building. And he also has generators on, on contract with Water and Sewer for the water plant and the Lockland Mill. So Scott's got all kinds of equipment, whatever you need, and he's super to work with, great guy.
So I would recommend that we approve the plan as it is, uh, tonight. And, uh, as I said, it's a plan. We can always amend it and adjust it later.
You don't want to move the, um, generator up at this point or?
I'd say that's a, the budget discussion for, uh, later, perhaps. I, I think Fred's suggestion is perhaps the smarter move at this point until we have a longer term plan in place as far as wh- where and, and what we need a generator for. Uh, because that will also affect the size of generator that we need. So, um, that for now, probably a more, uh, temporary solution is, is maybe the better choice. And that's a different budget line item.
Okay.
All right. So we're looking for a motion to approve the, the capital improvement program for the Borough of Newville from 2021 to 25. So it's been moved.
Like a second.
And it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Anything else, Michael?
That's all I have tonight.
Anything for Michael? All right. Very good. Ever to citizen comment period. Uh, Fred, I, uh, looking here on, we don't have anything on YouTube. So that's clear. Um, do you want to address the other ones under correspondence or do you think that's more citizen comment?
Oh, we can do that now if you like what, what.
They, they roll right into each other. So go ahead.
Okay. Okay. So the, the first item we have under correspondence is, uh, Dan Storm, who has been the longtime county maintenance manager for PennDOT, is going to be retiring. Uh, acting superintendent will be Terry Appleby. Uh, Terry is no stranger to Newville. He has worked with us in the past. Uh, both of these gentlemen are top-notch. Having Terry take over is an excellent, uh, choice. And so, uh, the borough highways will be in good hands. And I did send a letter to Dan, uh, congratulating him on his retirement and thanking him for always being there to help Newville. We received from the Department of Housing and Development at the Redevelopment Authority uh, on September 3rd, a notice to proceed with the design and bidding process for North Corporation Street. Uh, we have a letter from the, uh, solicitor of the Newville EDA, Marcus A. McKnight, who has, uh, informed the Borough Council that on Wednesday, September 16th at 3:00 PM, the EDA met and, uh, discussed the replacement of Mike Niedlinger on the EDA board. And, uh, their request is to have council approve the appointment of Vincent Malott, a real estate broker who has expressed an interest in serving on the board to fill the unexpired term of Mike Nightling. So you need to act on that.
All right. So, uh, it looks like we're looking for a motion to appoint Vince Malott to fill the vacancy on the Newville Economic Development Authority, uh, which will run through, that, that term will run through, uh, December 31st, 2021.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. It's been moved.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. All right.
The, uh, next letter is from Russell Gould, um, which, uh, comes to council in the form of a citizen comment. A couple of things he brought to council's attention. And I did share these, uh, comments with, uh, Chief Kozier. Many of them are police related. He talks about vehicles parked on the south side of West Main Street, uh, that are not close part, uh, parked close enough to the curb. And, uh, it reduces the flow of traffic through Main Street, uh, especially on East Main Street. Uh, the areas between West Street and the traffic light. Uh, he's also talked about, uh, vehicles parking in the no parking zone where the curb is painted yellow at intersections. And it, uh, hampers the line of sight for vehicles pulling out at these intersections. Uh, he brings up, uh, the locations of West Street and Big Spring Avenue and Springfield and Fairfield Street. Uh, council did do, uh, quite a bit of work up on Springfield and. and Fairfield Street. Council did do quite a bit of work up on Springfield and Fairfield number of years ago, trying to alleviate that parking problem. He also, as mentioned about speeding on Parsonage Street, and as the chief mentioned before, the officers are out and they're addressing that ongoing. He also requests the council give consideration to returning to in person meetings. And that basically summarizes his communication. And you've all received copies of it by email today. Also included in your packet was a report from the Technology Director at Big Spring School District, Robert Kreps, who is working on a new project for the improvement of transmission of data fiber optic plan. So I won't go into much detail on that, but it's in your meeting packet and will definitely be a great learning tool and enhancement for the school district. Cooperating, the borough's been cooperating as has West Pensboro with the school district on this project. We have a request from Sarah Ryan, who is the Borough Secretary at Newburgh Borough. She asked for council to approve having the Borough Public Works come up to Newburgh and collect leaves in early November and late November, two collection dates. And we've helped them in the past.
Sounds like we're looking for a motion.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And so Fred, you can work with them on on particular dates and stuff like that.
We will. There is a letter received today from Avis Allen. Her concern is the parking of the police vehicles on Big Spring Avenue. Again, this was sent over to the chief to look at. And I can tell you, and I'm not putting Mr. Darius on the spot, but we've had discussions on this in the past, Bob. And Mr. Darius was very gracious to talk to us about perhaps he might have a garage for two vehicles on Glebe Avenue. That's something we could look at as a long term solution to getting our cars inside and secure. That's all that I have for correspondence.
Any questions? All right. And we love one more time. Nothing else on YouTube. All right, moving on, old business. Just wanted to add something real quick. We we had in the past discussed the meeting format. It's getting probably November is when we need to advertise for next year. I think our goal is to do as much of the advertising as possible. Is there any discussion you want to have right now about the format, changes, that kind of stuff? If you recall, there was something said, I think, I think it was in August was when when we discussed that. Do you want to discuss it one last time in October and review things?
So the plan you were talking about would have us meeting a couple of times a month. And in both instances, we would be able to make decisions, take votes.
Correct. There would be a work session, an hour long work session, followed by a general meeting afterwards.
Right.
Twice, twice a month, which is currently what we do.
Right. So I mean, at some level, what you're saying is we're going to spend the same amount of time per month. But we're just going to divide it up differently. So we'll have discussion and decision making both meetings instead of just discussion at one and decision making at the other.
Correct.
Okay.
I guess my question is, when will we have our finance meeting if we're going to meet an hour before our work session?
So Fred, can we can we incorporate like a 15 minute finance update at each meeting?
We could, but you know, tonight's finance committee update took 45 minutes.
Right.
Some, I think the shortest finance meeting that we have is about a 30 minute meeting. So that, you know, 15 might really be pushing it. I think we could in 30 minutes cover finances, but it all depends, Scott, really what we have, you know, on the agenda. You know, I'll say this, everyone has the list of bills, everyone has the balances. If you're comfortable in not going through and reading all those and just entering them into the record, and that would save quite a bit of time. And we could focus on, you know, the true finance issues, purchases, and, you know, things like that.
But and I think I think my thought is too, some of those, some of the, like the autoclave, the auto, the autoclave that we talked, not the autoclave, arrow clave. If the Eric, like that, that really is a, is a, you know, like an admin discussion. So those things could be plugged into a work session meeting during those discussions.
Right.
If you have some recurring expenses, you know, you expect them. Why, why read them?
Yeah, we don't, we don't list those, Bob. There's a resolution that gives us the authorization to pay those in advance.
Right.
So we don't list those.
Good.
Things like PP and L, health insurance, Borough Insurance. The only thing I would say about having two work sessions and two meetings. You know, I don't know when I would get time to work for the Water and Sewer Authority. And we did enter into an agreement for the Water and Sewer Authority where my time was going to be divided equally. And this year, because of the pandemic, it has not. The members of the authority realize that. They have not made an issue of it. But we're coming down to the end of my time here. I would like to spend one year with the Borough. And then I would like to spend one year and focus on working with the authority. And, you know, adding additional meetings is going to make it difficult for me because now I have to come up with another work session agenda and another council meeting agenda. And basically for the Borough, that's all I'm going to be doing is making agendas and preparing for meetings. It won't be time to apply for grants. It won't be time to do all the other things and work for the authority.
But Fred, I'm not, I'm not seeing where we're adding, we're not adding another meeting.
Oh, I thought I heard that we were adding another work session and another council meeting. So we're just going to have one work session, one council meeting.
So the way we would work it is from six to seven, we would focus on work session stuff. And then from seven o'clock, or not six to seven, from seven to eight, we'd we'd do a work session. And then from eight to nine, we would, we would handle business.
And we would.
And we would do that. And we would do that twice a month, which we currently do.
Just instead of having a separate identity, meeting identified as a work session and another one that's identified as a, as a regular county, we, we would be free to conduct business, discuss items at both meetings. It would be, each meeting would be a combination meeting instead of separating things out. That's, that's the proposal.
Correct.
Does it take you longer to prepare an agenda for one or the other type of meeting?
For the work session? It doesn't take as much time for the work session as it does the regular meeting.
I see. So what you're saying, there's some net increase in time that should be doing.
Well, you know, just look at today, the number of emails that you receive, because not everybody has their reports in on time. And we have some late additions to the agenda. So you have to get all that information out, then I have to modify the agenda. And so I think it's worked out well, having a work session. I think you just need to modify your rules and say, at your work session, you may have a vote on an item if it's essential. If not, everything you've done at your work session rolls into your meeting at the end of the month.
The only problem I have with that is it might be essential for me, but it may not be essential for Jack or somebody else. And that, that's where I think things get sketchy with the public. You know, they, they, they don't expect, they're not expecting action to happen in work sessions. And we've been called on it. And rightfully so. I just, I just don't like the idea. Either we're going to be able to vote on at both meetings or we're not going to be able to vote. And it's just going to have to be plain and clear. I just, I don't like the idea of, you know, I feel guilty that I, that I voted on something during a work session. And because that's, you know, that's the impression that we've given the public. And that, in my mind, that impression needs to go away.
Well, the worst, the work session was always designed to have a freer discussion on particular issues. But I never, if it was public, we advertised as a public meeting. I never thought that we were restricted in what we could do in terms of voting.
Well, it's, it's always been, it's always been said that it has to be time sensitive. And, you know, whether that's, I know it's not true. I know that we can vote on anything because it's a public meeting, it's been properly advertised. But we have always communicated to the public that it is, has to be something that's important or time sensitive. And, you know, that we're not just going to do something in a work session night. And, you know, I, either that philosophy needs to go away or or something. But, you know, a number of these things, you know, I think we could, we could handle, you know, basically, we would take what we're handling tonight and split it in half. And, you know, we certainly wouldn't have as many items to address every month versus if you handle them every two weeks. So.
Yeah, I do think it would help if we could make decisions more frequently. I think we have to be more nimble, you know, and some things just shouldn't wait. But I understand the problem there, too. I mean, maybe, maybe we change the expectation about these meetings and let the public know you can vote at both. Or something else. But I think, I mean, there is a, I think there is a need for us to be able to, to vote. And we shouldn't be voting if we're saying we're not voting, unless it really is an emergency. And because that violates the public trust. So.
I think I thought I kind of understood. My understanding was with the work sessions, it was to discuss things, give, give people time to, to give consideration to items that were discussed. And then we get feedback and make a decision later. There's, there can be some benefit to that. But at the same time, I do kind of, I've kind of felt that we spend a good bit of time rehashing the same issue, spending, spending more time, because we end up discussing everything twice before we make a decision. That's not all bad, but I I'm not sure. I have, I've kind of questioned whether it's the best use of our time also.
Can we look at the process, see if we can apply lean six sigma to meetings?
Here's the problem for me, but I'll be very honest with you. What's going to happen is every week of the month, I'm going to be putting together an agenda for someone. Whether it's Borough Council, the first week of the month, Planning Commission, the second week, Water and Sewer, the third week, and Borough Council, the fourth week. And I'll tell you, I look forward to retirement tonight more than ever before. I don't know when you think I'm going to have the time to do all this, plus everything that's up there on that board to apply for. I just don't know when you think.
Are we meeting? Are we spending too much time on meetings?
Excellent question. And in response to, in response to what Fred has said, and I, and I, I've actually made this comment to Fred before, it's not, not a new, new thought to me, but in, it has always seemed to me that all the committees and so forth are putting too much burden on Fred for preparing all these agendas and so forth. The, as far as I'm concerned, the planning commission should, the chairperson there should be creating the, the agenda for the planning commission and, and putting it together and so forth, instead of relying on Fred to be acting as the secretary for all, all the various committees and council and whatnot. But that's, that's my, my view is based on some other boards and so forth that I've been part of as well. It's the, whoever is head of the board works with the secretary of the, of that body to create an agenda and put it out. They don't farm it to, to somebody else.
I'll make a motion that we have a couple of people look at how to make this process leaner, the whole process, planning commission, council meetings, all the other meetings. Anybody wants to second that?
Would you volunteer?
Me? Well, I mean, lean, lean six sigma was, you know, used by the federal government a lot. And it had an impact on making meetings more efficient and effective, not just meetings, but all processes. We're talking about processes and products. What do we get out of all these meetings? Why should we have so many? How could we decentralize them?
Well, I, I get it with the federal government because, you know, the business of the government is meetings, but.
Bureaucracy at a much smaller level, but still.
We only have two meetings a month. I mean. Fewer.
Fewer, leaner.
I guess what, my question is, what's, what's wrong with the process that you have now where you have a work session, the first week of the month, and you have a regular board meeting at the end of the month? And you have plenty of time in between research matters or, you know, look at things and then come to the council meeting and make your recommendation?
I think I expressed what my issue was with it. That there doesn't, there's not a work session that goes by that we don't vote on something. And, you know, perceptually, that's just what we've been told.
Could we make, make it clearer? Or could we create some clearer criteria for making decisions at the work session? So that people would expect it in certain circumstances. I mean, are there certain areas that we could say, these are things that we think we have to, as a general rule, we'll have to make decisions on more frequently than once a month. I don't know if it's subject areas or, you know, we'd have to kind of define that. But if we could set forth a series of, or a number of circumstances under which we do reserve the option to make those decisions, then would that get at it, keeping the same format otherwise? And you'd sort of inform the public that there are going to be times when we make these decisions, they're going to be particularly critical things. Here's what the areas are. And then they're informed that if they care about those things, they should tune into that meeting as well as the regular meeting.
Living in a democracy, we do need to keep the public informed. But we don't want to overload ourselves either. Online.
Personally think two meetings a month is too much if we streamline it and just know what we're going to talk about and put a time limit on our meetings, you know, and be prepared when we come to a meeting with your project and what you want to do to try to convey it, but put a time limit on our meetings. But I don't think two months, two meetings a month is much for this borough. That's my personal opinion.
You think it is, is it too much, Ed?
No, I don't think it's too much, not too. No.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But you're saying they could be shorter in time?
I think so. I think we should put a time limit, like, like most agendas you have it, this is what we're going to discuss, there's a time limit. And, you know, it just, that's my feeling on it. I'm trying to find the sample agenda that I sent to everybody and I'm not able to find it right off the top of my, my head. But, but essentially, I think the way it worked was during the work session, in week one, you knocked out, you know, three of the, three of the committees. And then basically, the actual, the actual general meeting or regular monthly meeting consisted of new business, old business, and that's, you know, and some verbal reports. Whoever had verbal reports for that meeting, you know, and I agree with, with Ed, you know, if, if a committee meets, they should have a written report. And my. And my honest opinion is Fred shouldn't be writing those written reports, neither should Lindsay, it should be whoever, whoever is a part of that meeting. Write the written report and submit it and uh, you know, whoever the liaison is the one who just summarizes the important information that needs to be shared. I mean, I also agree with Michael, like, I, I mean, I, I agree, I appreciate everything Fred does, and there's, there's things on this, on this agenda that I, I as president wouldn't be able to put on, but I could, I could probably structure much of the agenda and have him just bounce his eyes off of it and say, we need to add this, tweak that kind of thing. You know, but I, I, I realize Fred does a lot of stuff behind the scenes as well, with especially Marcus and that kind of stuff, so.
Scott, that email you sent out was August 3rd about the different meetings.
August 3rd.
August 3rd, yes.
Uh, Fred, I assume, uh, I'm just, you know, to discuss all possibilities here, I assume you, Lindsay is fully tasked as well, um, and wouldn't have the time to do, pick up some of this.
Well, remember every one of these meetings that you call? She's the one that's writing the minutes. So she writes the minutes for the work session, she writes the minutes for the regular monthly meeting, she does the minutes for the Economic Development Authority, and anything else that comes up in between.
Yeah. You don't see any slack in there.
And I, I do the minutes for Water and Sewer, in addition to preparing their work. And, and we've got new warehouses coming online. We've got a lot of work on the Water and Sewer side, that things are going to become much more busy.
Alright, so it looks like the way, the way that it was set up was the uh, work session from seven to eight would start with a finance report, any presentations that would occur, uh, for example, Eagle Scout or, you know, the rail trail kind of thing would happen, and then at the committee verbal reports are during that time as well. And then in the general meeting, uh, we start off just pretty much the same way we do now. And uh, it says verbal reports, uh, that would be verbal reports of people who aren't on council, so that like the police chief, the fire chief. Uh, there's, there's kinds of verbal reports, and some of them are only one time, one time a month. So like, police chief, what, first meeting of the month, fire chief, second meeting of the month. Uh, hit correspondence, public comment, old business, new business, and then adjournment. That's, that, that was what was in the email, um, that was sent. Thanks for finding that, Joey.
You're welcome.
I'm going to suggest that we table it for tonight, maybe Scott, if you could send that out again, just for, so everybody has it for ready review, and then we discuss it at the, at the work session.
Okay. I mean, ultimately, my goal is two things. Uh, one, to streamline meetings, so that way it's not burdensome to everybody, and the second one is though we can actually take action at every meeting without, you know, without this feeling that you've done something wrong and um, you know.
Or that we're trying to do something when nobody's really paying attention.
Correct, correct, exactly.
Right. That's important.
Okay, so you want to discuss it, um, discuss it in, at the end of October? Or we can actually discuss it in the work session too, uh, or, well, maybe not, we'll talk about that. So w- we can talk at a later date. I think Fred, you want to get those dates out sometime in November, I believe, is correct, right?
Well, the one thing that I'll tell you right now, it's, it's costing you $450 a month to advertise your meetings because of the COVID-19 requirements, the requirements under Act 17 that we have to include. So we can no longer do the blanket uh, meeting notice, we have to go in and amend all the uh, notices that we previously issued, and the only way we can do that is by a separate announcement for each meeting. I'd like to get away from that, like to, you know, number one, it's, it's costing you a tremendous amount of money every month, which I don't think is necessary. I'd like to get down to a meeting scheduled like we've had in the past, where we do all of our meetings in one notice to the newspaper. We include the statutory requirements of the Sunshine Act, and we include all the uh, requirements under Act 17. Uh, and we do one advertisement for the entire year, and then we, we live with it.
Is that lean enough? Could we make that leaner?
Well, first of all, a- all we're doing is advertising the dates and times in the meeting, the content is up to you. It's up to the council what you want to include on those agendas. We're just advertising the dates and time. That's all that goes into that meeting though.
Alright, so we're good to, to table this, and we'll discuss it, we have a little bit more time, and Fred, like, you said November, we'd like to get that, that out and publicize in November, correct?
All the area boroughs and townships, they advertise in the News Chronicle in the month of December, maybe uh, November at the earliest, but uh, most everyone gets everything out in the month of November.
Okay. Ed, don't let that mountain lion eat you.
I'd be trying to get rid of these things.
Alright, so is everybody, everybody's comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, under new business, letter A, I discuss and approve the purchase of the Aeroclave disinfection device at a cost of $16,398 from Aeroclave LLC, 4007 Forsyth Road, Winter Park, uh, Florida, 32792, with the proceeds of the Renew Cumberland Grant. Anybody wanna follow up on that?
Well, yeah, I do. Uh, we had a conversation at the uh, Finance Committee meeting. Uh, I have some concerns about it. Um, it's um, you know, it's an expensive product. And uh, if we had proof that it would work, um, that might be one thing, but um, you know, I've done, my wife has done some research on this. There are no, there is no peer reviewed literature on this device. The only thing we've been able to find is the manufacturer's claims, and uh, in, on their use page, uh, one of the things they say right at the top is uh, we can make no representations about the effectiveness of this. Uh, because they haven't been able to prove it actually works, uh, they got data that suggests it does, but it's not uh, conclusive, not enough to make, be able to say that it really does what it's, it's, says it's gonna do. It also is really aimed at um, surfaces. They do most of their sales to fire departments and EMS operations uh, because they need clean surfaces, obviously, because they transport injured and sick people a lot. Um, but it doesn't address uh, the major concern uh, that we would have, which is airborne uh, viruses. I mean, that's the way most of this is passed. And this doesn't address that at all. And um, you know, and it, it's, it's something, you know, where the, you treat the room, the surfaces are sterile. But as soon as you bring some additional people into it, uh, and if somebody's infected, it's now not sterile. I mean, so it does nothing about the actual problem of a group of people getting together and breathing on each other and passing this virus along. So I think we need to think about, uh, this may be, and we've had this, we had this conversation earlier, so it's kind of developed. We maybe need to think about something like this for surfaces, but maybe not as expensive as this, and use some of the money for other things like uh, air filters, uh, HEPA filters. Those are used by hospitals, my, uh, I talked to my daughter today, she's an emergency physician. That's what they use, they use HEPA filters, uh, it replaces the air um, three times an hour. And um, it's very effective. There may be some issues in terms of our facility and whether it can accommodate that, but some sort of air filtration devices um, might and would be important, and I think that smart TV that we've been talking about uh, would help to um, uh, would help in terms of, uh, they're not having to be people, as many people in the room all the time. People would have choices as to whether to be in the room or not be in the room, because it's a live uh, process, live streaming op- operation, and people can participate in real time. So maybe some combination of those three things works, but I'm wondering whether it really makes sense to put all those apples, all that $16,000 into one machine that we don't actually know and doesn't really address the primary concern that we have, which is airborne viruses.
Fred, um, so are, we have a line item in that, in that uh, grant that is designated just for this, correct? So we just can't up and say we want to do, you know, like HEPA filters instead of this, correct?
Well, I think what you would be able to do is under your uh, your meeting room improvements.
Right, we could do it there.
Include the filters there, but what we're talking about here, this device, when we looked at it, was intended to clean surfaces, that's exactly what it was intended to do. Was intended to clean and sterilize our police vehicles, our ambulances, the fire trucks, and so forth. And this device is represented that the spray and the content of the spray will not harm electronic equipment in the ambulances and the police cars and so forth. Jack's right, does nothing for airborne, it cleans contact on surfaces. And it can also disinfect a room. However, if you want to have true disinfection, what you do with this device is you assign it to a department, to the police department with clean vehicles every Monday, fire department with clean vehicles, you know. Every Tuesday, the ambulance is might get done three times a week, but you set up a program, you do your disinfection, and it's ongoing, it's uh, not a once and done type thing. So that's what this device does. The uh, other alternative would be to have a device like this, and as we said, some sort of a standalone air purification system. As you brought up before, Scott, the meeting room does not have ducts. You have no ductwork, it would be very expensive to include that type of ductwork and then into the municipal building, so I think you're gonna have to look at some type of a device that would be a standalone air purification system. We have one here in the office, uh, to clean the air in, in the upstairs office here. It's a small unit, wasn't very expensive, but it handles, you know, COVID-19 and other pathogens. So I think you could look at two, the answer is, this item covers a portable disinfection system for vehicles and equipment, that's what was represented to the county. And then the other option would be to include in the meeting room improvements, a standalone disinfection system.
Yeah, I didn't, I ne- I guess I had never understood that the primary purpose of this was for the uh, meeting room. I, I thought that the uh, idea all along was to have something to for the primary purpose of disinfecting our, our vehicles and being able to sanitize them routinely.
Well, you, you can, Mike, you can use this for meeting rooms. You can use it for um, you know, police equipment rooms, if uh, the police station, that you want to go in and disinfect lobby, the public restroom, you can do that, this will, as Jack said, it, it sterilizes surfaces, but it doesn't do anything for airborne pathogen.
Right.
So this device can, a- and, and they represent that, the manufacturer represents that. Now, the other thing about, you know, not being able to find any uh, product reviews on this, many of these products didn't exist until March and April of this year. Companies popped up and started manufacturing these devices. So there's, there's very little um, history, as Jack pointed out, on, you know, what these devices are capable of doing, quality ratings, things like that.
Yeah, I just, I just was responding to, to what Jack was saying about our primary concern being the air quality, and that is correct for the meeting room. But I guess I, I just always thought that the purpose of this per- purchase was not primarily for the meeting room anyway, that was, we could use it there, but the primary purpose of getting it was for our, our, our vehicles, especially the uh, first responder vehicles.
It was intended to, uh, when, when I sent the, the chief an email about this, uh, the discussion was to sterilize the police cars, the station, and then when it wasn't in use by the police department, we could send it up to the firehouse. It's also portable, so we could take it around and do the surfaces at the trailhead, and all the surfaces at the park, that was another. Uh, this doesn't be, it runs on a battery system, and you, it's very portable, so that's why we looked at.
So this, this, this could have multiple uses in many different situations. Help the police department.
But again, it, it, as Jack points out, it, it's surface treatment.
Right, right. Jack is, Jack is correct, airborne is the thing, CDC was talking about airborne. Then uh, political aspects made him shut, shut what they were talking about, you know, how, how this thing is uh, largely through airborne. And that, that's.
I mean, I, there, there are probably stationary devices for buildings, but when you get in airborne matter in vehicles, I, I, I haven't seen anything out there, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but you know, there are filters and systems for, for meeting rooms and things like that.
Yeah, well, I was under the impression it was uh, in, in good part for the uh, for our meeting room. But be that as it may, whatever it's for, uh, I think we do need to address the problem of how do we create an environment where we can go back safely and meet in person?
I don't think we can, frankly, I think the new normal, I think we better carry on the way we're doing it now.
Well, I, 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 let's not go down that rabbit hole right now. Uh, let's, let's focus on the Aeroclave, and so Fred, what I understand is, this is, that, that money is designated just for the Aeroclave. We can't use it to go out and buy new lawn furniture or new trash cans, it's only for the Aeroclave. There's nothing to say that we can't do a HEPA filter system uh, with the, with the money from, from the meeting room, because we should have leftover. And this is use it or lose it money. It's, it's the renew grant money, so if we don't use it, we lose it. And so that's my, that's my understanding of, of where we're at with it, so.
Got one, one question if I can. Who's, who would operate this? Had to be qualified people or be trained to do it, or how's that operate?
I think we could train your cat to do it.
My cat, he, he do it, he do it.
Yeah, uh, it's a one person, it's a one person thing, from what I understand, and it's uh, you flip a switch pretty much and walk out of the room, and 20 minutes later, you come in and shut it down. It uh, it runs itself, uh, it's pretty, they're pretty easy to run from what I, whatever.
Discussing this before, it wasn't clear to me that this was uh, had to be used for the Aeroclave, this funding, I thought it was for COVID response, um, COVID cl- clean, I thought it could be used in any way, but if what you're telling me is, it's, it's that or nothing.
Yeah.
I guess it's that, but it seems to me uh,
I mean, we could go with a different product that's like it, I'm sure, but I, I, we can't just stop and.
Okay, this is a solution to one problem, but it's not a solution to the, to a very large.
Whole problem, correct.
Let me, let me just clarify what uh, the Renew Cumberland covers. Renew Cumberland will give you money in the amount of $7,532.60 for your police operations, administrative services, 47141, Public Works, 204572, NWSA Services, 8,31399, COVID Recovery Plan, 1,00945, and Personal Protective Equipment, 4,0031809. So we will be submitting a, an invoice to the county for reimbursement by October 10th for $24,626.01. The counties approve these amounts, we send in our paperwork, they send us a check. The next three areas, you incur the expense, and then you submit it to the county and you get reimbursed. Meeting Room Improvements, $10,000. Borough Office Renovations, which is the counter at the front desk, $10,500, and then the Aeroclave, $16,500. So those items, which total $37,000, you may decide you don't want to do them. If you don't do them, you won't get reimbursed, and the money will just go back to the county and be allocated somewhere else.
And the disinfectant system category is specific enough that it doesn't include, it wouldn't include air filters, it would include this kind of device. It wouldn't include air filters. It would include this kind of device.
As as was pointed out, it it's AeroClave disinfection system.
Okay.
That was funded at sixteen thousand five hundred. Now, you can pick another disinfection system. Doesn't necessarily have to be AeroClave. You you can go with a disinfection system, but it has to be. The type that we're looking at here, similar to the AeroClave. If you want to put in a filtration system, an air handling system, that would be most appropriate under the meeting room improvements. And as I said, you have money there in the amount of ten thousand.
Okay.
I would move that we approve the purchase of the AeroClave disinfection device.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'm wondering where we're gonna get the sixteen thousand add, pay for it and to get reimbursed.
What will happen, Joey, is we will take it out of our general fund. Submit it to the county and, you know, it'll be based upon funds that we have available at that time. So this is something that's coming down the road. It won't, it's not going to be bought tonight.
Right, okay.
After, we're not going to have to wait, you know, for our EIT monies to come in and these tax monies that we have outstanding. And then when those monies are in, we'll structure these purchases and then submit our reimbursement.
Okay, now how long do we have though to get that money? Because isn't there deadlines?
Yeah, we have to submit all of our funding requests by December thirty-first.
Okay.
Basically, I I believe the county has three, two cutoff rounds coming up. The tenth of October and I think somewhere around ten November. I would like to see everybody in by November, obviously, because during the holidays, things get lean. There is a waiting period. You might wait four to six weeks for your check to come from the county.
Okay. Thank you, that's on my head.
Are we gonna be able to address air filtration also some, someplace?
What we'll have to do, Bob, is start looking at, you know, devices. That can handle that meeting room and the square footage of the meeting room and so forth.
I recommend we do that if we're gonna have meetings in a, in a specific room, wherever that. We feel comfortable about, you know, airborne problems.
Alright, back, let's get back to the motion here. So it's been moved and it's been seconded. Any further discussion on the AutoClave? My goodness, AeroClave, AutoClave is clean user, medical instruments.
That's right.
That'll take care of everything, Scott.
That'll kill everything with botulism.
Figure out how to get everybody inside it.
Alright, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no. Extensions, motion carries. Okay. And to now to address Mr. Darius, the, we can, we can look into some, some air filtration systems. And we can apply that to our meeting room revision. There should be some money left in, in. Leftover from what we're working with on that.
Yeah, and I think that 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 smart television is a good idea too. I think that 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 really extends our options in terms of having people in the room. People being able to participate.
Right. Alright. Go ahead.
Could I make a suggestion that on the air handling system? Maybe we talk and consult with Tucky. I know Ken represents, so does a lot of work for doctors' offices and dental offices, things like that. And they probably have a better handle on this and than we would.
Makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Good idea.
Okay, item number B, discuss opting out of the payroll tax holiday authorized by, by an executive order of the president. Of President Donald J. Trump and you can review the resolution twenty twenty oh six. And that should be in your packet.
I'll make a motion without any further discussion to opt out.
So you have a motion on the table.
I second that.
And it's been seconded.
Do you, I think you need to explain for those that are watching or look at this video that. This is a program in which there is a payroll savings of. Social Security payments which has to be repaid starting in January first of two thousand twenty-one. And that means that people would be paying double withholding for that period of time until it's repaid. Which creates an additional hardship on many. And so many businesses and municipalities, because of. Of that hardship on on employees are exercising the option to not do it. And most of the townships I represent have have passed similar motions. And it just doesn't make sense to, after one of the most difficult years that we've had. To then put a burden on our employees that. That is unnecessary, so.
Yes, this is not like a sales tax holiday where you get out of paying sales tax for a period of time. And then the sales tax is reenacted. In this case, whenever the holiday ends. You are liable, still liable for any tax that would have been paid during that period and you have to pay it later, so. Deferral program, not a getting out of it program.
And employees don't want to have the extra cash now to pay later?
Well, the problem is to pay later may add to burdens that they've already worried about. Because they have, many, many, many people were spending for Christmas and trying to repay it in the first quarter of the next year. So it's just. You know, it's just a safer thing to do, I think.
The employees may want it, Jack, or they may think they want the extra cash now, but without realizing, without doing the math. As to what they're going to be paying, what was, how much it's going to affect their income. After the first of the year. And the, the problem with the, with it is. We can't make the choice to allow each employee to choose what they want to do. It's, it's a blanket. Policy.
Essentially, to save fifty dollars now, they're gonna pay a hundred dollars after January or in January.
Right, but they got the fifty dollars, so they just have to hold on to it. To, but you're saying that that's not practical, really.
It's the same idea as, as people winning a lottery and holding on to that money. It doesn't happen very often.
Okay, I got it.
Alright, so we have a proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Fred, you look like you want to say something.
No, no. You know, in, in direct answer to Jack's concern, we issued payroll on Friday. The position of Jeff Koik is that unless he's directed, he's not participating in this for his clients. So payroll was issued on Friday. I've had no one call and say, why aren't we getting the. Tax holiday benefit. So I think the employees are satisfied with their checks as they are. We've heard from no one.
Alright, I, the next item, which was discussed in the finance committee meeting. You have a number of projects for flood mitigation in your packet. We're looking to approve application, approve an application for funding for FEMA flood mitigation grants. This is, we're looking to give Fred the go to, to start filling out those applications. My understanding is that only six municipalities in our area or, or our region have. Foddered to fill out the paperwork, so hopefully our chances are good and. Anything else, Fred?
No, that's it.
So we need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Go say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Next one, dispersment of six thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents to the. PA Auditor General's Fireman's Relief Fund. Fred, you can probably better explain this than I can.
Yeah, the borough receives every year a check from the auditor general. We have to acknowledge that check. And then we have thirty days to pay it over to the fire company. So we deposit it into our general fund account and then we issue a check to Joel Griffey. Who's the treasurer of the fire company Fireman's Relief and it goes right into the Fireman's Relief Fund. Fireman's Relief Fund exists to buy protective gear and equipment, pay for certain types of insurances. That benefit the health and welfare of the fire, fire company members. These are the volunteer firemen.
Alright, any other questions on that? We are looking for a motion for that.
They moved.
And seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Alright, it's my understanding we need to go into executive session to discuss a few matters. There will be no action taken in executive session. And if we do need to take action, it will come out of, we will come out of that, these executive session only. It's been a long day. We will come out of executive session to take that action in, in public. Did I say that? Alright, Mr. McKnight?
You did.
Alright, super. So I'm going to, oh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
I may have to move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say no. Any extensions? Alright.